It's what, 6:02? Um, before we get into the meat of the agenda, I just, um, I want to take a minute and, um, just a moment of silence to reflect on the past week and thoughts about the Hopner family for Joe, Susan, Marcus, Paul. I think his funeral was today. So, um, if we could just have a moment of silence for that. And I also just want to thank, or acknowledge, the work that Adam did in supporting, Adam and his support staff, and central office staff, and Howard Center staff did in supporting our kids this week. And I know that it won't end, that this is gonna, this is gonna take a while. And I just want to acknowledge how thankful I am for everyone's response. So, thank you. Um, adjustments to the agenda. I, um, it's not really an adjustment. Just know that, because I know you all have studied thoroughly your agenda items, you all noticed that the policies that are written on the front of the agenda didn't match up with the policies through the link. And we are talking about the ones that are on the link, so it was all the board, the board ones. And the only other adjustment I have is that we do not have a need for an executive session tonight.
We don't have any executive session.
We don't have an executive session tonight.
Okay.
Are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
What don't we have tonight?
An executive session. Um, audience and communications. We can see the audience now. Any audience and communications? Okay, we'll move on to 4.0, presentation. Jeff, are you gonna introduce the? Thank you.
Thank you. If you recall, last month, I did a broad overview of the presentations that were very impressive here, and this year's focus is on academic proficiency. Just a reminder of the purpose for the presentation here are, is rather, to understand the current system and practices and tools to support all students in their efforts to become proficient in the expectations set forth by the state and district. We talked about key understandings last month, we addressed the first two primarily, so we talked a little bit about the structure of the LEES and the graduation slash transferable skills that live within the LEES. And then we talked about how, in succeeding presentations, we would be looking more closely at what does it look like in the classroom? What's the pedagogy look like? What do the student experiences look like? And so we have some folks here tonight that are gonna share a couple of examples of that. So that's what the focus is for these next two. So, before they speak, I want to just do a quick overview, and we'll do this each time, where we'll talk specifically about the transferable skill that we're addressing. And in this case, it's integrative and informed thinking. And we have three common learning targets tagged to that one that you'll be seeing actually a little bit here, in terms of its application, their applications. But what I did was I just went into our jump rope software and identified different courses and content areas that have learning targets attached to this particular standard. So the standard is about using evidence, and hopefully you've got the folders that I gave you last month, and if you don't, no problem, but in there is a chart that shows you that, shows you those, rather. But we've got long ranges, there are just a few, but we've got AP Gov, and algebra, and business ethics, and high school, all kinds of different examples of people instructing and assessing the same skill in very different content areas. And then K8, also math, science, E.L.A., music, health, as just to show a few. And then the same thing for, the second one is to identify trends and patterns. There's a quick look at some of the content areas that have targets attached to this particular one. And then finally, analyzing, evaluating, synthesizing information. Again, some sampling of, samplings, rather, of courses and content areas that are instructing and assessing this one. Okay. So, what I want to do now is to hand it off to the experts who are doing this every day in the classroom. And when we thought about how to go, how to go about creating these presentations and create a progression, I started asking the RAS, I asked the principals, coaches, some of my own experiences I was relying on, I started shooting, who we could get in here to give great examples. And about that same time, I had an email from Adam, and I'm gonna share some of the content of that in a second, but it was a perfect opportunity to start, I think, with high school, where we start with AP Calculus exactly. And I just want to say a few words about Allison for you, I'm sure she's real comfortable with that idea. Allison has been at CBU for a long time, and when we started the work with proficiencies, she was one of the early adopters, and has done a wonderful job with making shifts in proficiency, she'll talk a little bit about that as well, and has produced great results, and has really played a pivotal role in advancing the pedagogy in CBU, at CBU, in CBU, and even in a broader context. And just to give you a couple of statistics here, AP exam, that's the culminating event for AP students typically, and it's a very rigorous exam. They take it at the end of the year. The national average on the AP exam, it's a five-point scale, the national average is about 59% of the students nationally score a four or a five, on a five-point scale. Last year, 35 students took it, of Allison's, 83% of them scored an A4 or a 5. So she has produced great results, and we're gonna bring her up here now and start yakking away. And I'll be over here to place some clips, and in the meantime, I'm gonna pass you a few things that you are gonna have C-Alice reference.
So, um, in case, I'm Allison Sherwin. I have been at CBU for 29 years, and about probably 24 or 25 of them, I've been teaching AP Calculus. And it is AP Calculus AB, in case you're making notes about that, it is not BC. And it is determined, the curriculum is determined by the college board.
Is BC, is BC offered here, or is it not offered?
It is not offered. Am I supposed to answer questions?
I'm gonna, so here's the thing, I forgot to mention, is that I'm also going to pass around, uh, post-its. If you have questions, if you could jot them down, we're gonna try to save them all at the end, and we make sure we give all representatives their due time, okay?
That's okay.
That's okay. Right now, babe.
So, the majority of students in the class are seniors who began their mathematical careers in our sending schools, and then when they got here to CBU, the majority of them weren't taking geometry as freshmen. We have, if I think about the impact of proficiency-based learning, and I think about how the AP exam was structured 25 years ago, it was usually really easy for me to guess all of the questions. I could guess the six open responses, because it was very formulaic. It was very, you gotta know these skills, you gotta be able to produce them. As the years have gone by, the AP board, or in specifics, the AP Calculus teachers have started to change that, so there was more of a focus on problem solving, justifying, and that worked out really well with the changes that we've been making in our district. And so, it became a little bit harder, the questions are a little bit more thought-provoking than they had been in the past, with an emphasis on being able to justify their work, using evidence to support their solutions. So, the structure of, so when, Jeff showed you the Informed and Integrative Thinking A and B, A is what I assess them on, but the actual structure of the class is based on Informed and Integrative Thinking C, which talks about, and I'm not sure if you had that up there, but anyway.
I did.
Oh, you did? Apparently I wasn't paying attention. Synthesizing information to build the knowledge, and that's how the whole entire class is structured. So when they're in class and they're working on a problem, they're actually building the information that they need. I, you have, in front of you somewhere, the list of, she paused slightly so they could all find their material. These are the eight targets, and at the beginning of the year, the students are given a copy of these eight targets. And then for each particular unit, there's usually six of these that they are given that we're gonna focus on, on that particular unit. So right at the beginning of the unit, they know the targets that we're gonna be working on. After that, you can see, as we go through, because the targets themselves increase in complexity, several of first formatives, yes, we're not at that most complex level yet. So, the next page that you'll see, is just an example of one of the first formatives that you've given, and you'll notice that what I've done is I've taken the particular targets that this assessment is focusing on, and then I've highlighted where I would expect them to be at that moment in time in the unit. And so, what I try to convey to students is that if you're sort of on target, then by the end of the unit, you should be exceeding the standard, you should be at that most complex level on that target. So, it's, we're good here. I think in the past, I didn't highlight those, and I'm like, oh my god, I'm at a one, and I'm like, yay! And they're like, no! So, I highlighted, so they would know, this is where I expect you to be. And then you'll notice the next one, we could take some time and do the problem if you'd like. The next one is not the one you're gonna be seeing. Towards the middle of the unit, where you'll notice on some of the targets, they could be exceeding the standard. And then on others, we're still just beginning. Okay? And so, as they go through, in the ideal world, given timing and schedule, typically I try to have the last formatives before the unit be level fours, so that they have an idea of where, what the most complex situation would be. And then I think we have some clips to show you.
You wanna talk a little bit about that first problem?
Yeah, so right here is an example of a problem that I would give them. No, they're not expected to be able to graph that on their own, but this is the type of problem, it's not just a parabola, or a cubic, or something that they, they can do readily. This is now a relation, and we have to know, if this was modeling the movement of a particle, we might need to know the rate at which it was moving at a particular instant. In order to do that, we need to know how to differentiate it. So, in this particular task, I just sort of threw this problem in front of them, no introduction, no me standing in front, and be like, Mary, what sense do you make of it? And I, we spend a lot of time in class with my giving them, kind of building on what they've seen in their middle schools with private reasoning time, where are you stuck? Can you verbalize that? And then, you can see a little bit of what they do. So, what you can see there is that, I have the advantage of many of the students coming in, being very used to this routine. I, my understanding is that all of our teachers have gone through best practices, if they're teaching, if they're math teachers. And so, I, I get the students who've had experience with that, and so when I say to them, okay, go in your private reasoning bubbles and think about this problem, they already know what that means, 'cause they've had so much experience with that. And then what you saw was that students kind of talking with one another, encouraging each other, also sort of pushing each other's thinking, and really being like, well, we, what do you mean by that? Where did that come from? And so that's what you saw in that particular clip, okay? And yes, at some point, somebody would go up and share, I don't think that was in this clip, but it might have been somebody in the background of one of these clips where there's another student who's maybe putting their solution on the board, and then we would kind of talk about that. And if there's anything I need to tweak, any notation or vocabulary, that's where I would step in and let them know about that.
Well, I don't know.
And so then, then there's ladder problem. So the next one is this one right here, very, very typical, if you sort of put in, you know, Googled related rates problems, you'd come up with a ladder sliding down. And so students, again, had never seen this problem before, what sense can you make of it? And so this next clip is gonna show you the sense that they were making of this problem. Now normally, I, I would try and go over to that table and say, well, okay, it makes sense, so re-verbalize it. What does that mean to you? And in case you, what I really liked about what they were doing is instead of doing it on pen or paper and like drawing it, they actually picked something up, and were like, well, wait, the thing is sliding down, and like thinking about it in different situations. Similarly, here's another clip, I think. So there, Claire is sharing her understanding of how this new type of notation that we were using is similar to something that we had done in the past. So again, that idea of building understanding by looking at what we have done before. You look like, you sound like you wanna say something.
No, uh, go ahead.
Well, so then, um, one of the things, and I don't probably do it as often as I would like, but this was the first day when we had looked at a particular problem, and they had nev, there was no introduction, I didn't stand up in front of them and say, well, in order to do today's problem, you need to know how to do this, this, and this. I literally just gave them the problem, we talked about it, and then, at the end, I said, all right, take, take out your target sheets that you have.
What?
Yes, please. Okay. So checking out this target, where are we now? So, I break this up, because I wanna show you the parallels here, which necessitates listening.
That's my favorite line.
I think using algebraic structures to differentiate and distinguish relationships. I can represent relationships using algebraic structures, determining and finding the key problem solving, or problems involving related grades. So what if you had, instead of dx over ds, what if it was dx over dt, dy over dt? What if you knew how fast that particle was going in a horizontal differential performance? So there are connections between the algebra that we do and the word problem application. So, what has changed dramatically, I feel, is that, again, when I first started teaching it, students, I would be like, blah, 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 listen, listen, and they would memorize it, they might do really, really well on the test, and then we'd go on to the next unit, and then they'd have to do it again. With focusing on, for example, the graduation standard on Informed and Integrative Thinking, Analyzing, Synthesizing, Evaluating Information, they're building, they're constantly building on the past unit. And so, the emphasis is less on, okay, now I've memorized this, and it's more on, wait, we've done that before, how is it different now? And so they're continually building on that. And it, it allowed, I mean, for me, it was a dramatic change, because, you know, the first unit might be a lot more directive, but as we go through other units, and the functions and relations become more complex, I'm sitting in the corner more often. And they're just like, oh, here's the only difference in this unit, here's the, and they take over. And I think that's been really dramatic. Last year, and the year before, I was able to complete not only everything that was on the AP curriculum, but also a few topics that are in Calc I that aren't on the AP, but that students are gonna see if they take it again in college, all before April break. And then, I, they, we had just time, we, I don't have to focus on how to take a multiple choice test, or how to answer those open responses, because we've been answering open responses all year long. And so, the only thing we do after, the only thing we'll do after April break, is we'll come back and we'll practice, okay, here's some study skills tips around multiple choice. And so we're able to do that, because it's allowed me to kind of restructure how I go about teaching calculus.
So, wait, since she was so efficient, not surprisingly, we do have a few minutes before we need to go to the next group, so if you do have some burning questions you wanna ask Allison, we've got time for two or three.
I have a complaint from a student studying physics, and he said his freshman math class was too easy after taking AP Calculus, and he had to transfer up to a sophomore.
I'm so sorry. Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The students did come back after the AP exam and say, that was so much easier than your test. Yes, it is. So, again, you know, I also should say that we don't use a textbook, 'cause in the past, I'd be like, you'd all, like, if you've taken, I'd be like, chapter one, it's like it was always the same thing. So now, I think I give a lot fewer practice problems. I used to assign, you know, three through 65, every other odd, because it was just skills, it was just over and over and over again. Whereas now, we do the bulk of like the, oof, problem solving, and then at home, anywhere from six to 10, depending on the type of problem. I'm sure that answered your question.
Yeah.
I've got my binder.
One more? Do we got time?
Dave?
I was curious why the graph wasn't included with question number one.
Why the graph was included? Do you mean this question?
It said the graph was included, but I, I just had to graph it myself to try and figure out what the function looked like.
My bad. Um, so, you mean the data, you were taking the quiz, Dave?
The data, it's, the data table is here, but it said the graph gives a general sketch of the data, so I was, I had to create.
So since I don't have a textbook, I have to make all this stuff up. That was a typo, and I took the graph out, because I wanted them to focus on the numeric, because that was the level one in the chart.
So, you mentioned you do teach AB, why don't you have a BC option as well?
Well, to be, this is, could be a long-winded answer. To be honest with you, as much as I love math, I don't want students to push through things so quickly. I want them to go, I mean, I've been sort of on a soapbox for years, please don't push them so quickly.
Yeah.
There's lots of other math they could do, why are they running through the curriculum so quickly? So, I think, because I can be kind of bossy, I think that the department as a whole, we all sort of believe in that, and so for years that I've been here, we've tried to get students to think more deeply about it, instead of more quickly.
Okay. And I'd forgotten, it was like, same amount of time, different amount of curriculum. So that makes, that makes sense.
Thank you, Allison. She'll be here also afterwards, if there's other questions, 'cause I'm making her sit through the second presentation as well. So, now we're going to give another example, and could be quite a contrast in experiences, but at the heart of it is pedagogy that is very, very similar to what you just saw. And what I neglected to mention before was that, as we go through the year, there will be times that we will not give a lot of specifics about the learning profiles of the students in a particular classroom, experience, or program, due to further. So just keep that in mind as we go forward, and please keep your questions focused on the pedagogy that's being discussed, okay? So, before we start here next, I started asking around also about other examples, and I have several people said, you gotta go see Ashley and Matt. So I did, I went to their classroom, I was super psyched when I left there, about all the work they've done, and after talking to them and hearing about all the shifts they've made just this year from last year, and they'll talk a little bit about it too, and the profound difference they're seeing in their learners because of some of these shifts. You'll see, it's a blended model, there are middle-level students there, and they'll speak a little bit about them as well. But before I bring them both up here, I want to mention that it's particularly nice now for me to be able to introduce both Ashley and Matt, but in particular Matt, no offense Ashley, but I coached varsity basketball here for eighteen, seventeen, eighteen years, and for four of those years, Matt Glas was playing for Mount Mansfield. And let's put this way, I never came up with any genius approaches on how to contain him. And then enjoyed watching his career at UVM, which was quite fruitful, but it's very nice to be able to say he's on my team now, given the nightmares I endured when he was not. And so, I'm gonna bring up both Matt and Ashley Sutton.
I actually heard Ashley's pretty good at basketball, too.
I mean, I can't dunk yet, but Matt picks me up, I get pretty close.
Good evening, everyone. Like Jeff said, I'm Ashley, this is Matt. And before I can talk about what we're doing this year, I really need to kind of tell you a little bit about our past, just kind of how Allison shared some, some of what we were doing in the past. So, in the past, both Matt and I were teaching a very traditional format, we were getting up and kind of presenting information, we were expecting students to get familiar with the targets, and be successful by becoming familiar with those targets. We were doing a lot of, asking them to do different activities, but really getting back to the formative assessments, the summative assessments, and kind of sticking to the plan. And this year, we've made a very big shift. Last year, Matt taught humanities, and I taught a science class, and this year, we kind of decided to co-teach and create a blended model. And with that, we have two blocks a day that are dedicated to this blended model, and we have removed the names of the model in our classrooms, so it doesn't say command is, it doesn't say science. For right now, we'll tell you more about it, but show of hands, who believes in aliens? Anybody? Or skeptical, at least, about aliens?
I'm on the fence, Al, after I've been to your class.
Okay. So, we'll come back to it, we'll talk a little bit about our alien unit, but for right now, on our board, when you step into our classroom, it says aliens during the first block, and it says aliens during that second block, which has really shifted student buy-in, it's shifted engagement, the approach, the co-teaching, having both of us up in front of the classroom, splitting into smaller groups to teach, has been a huge shift for us, each change, very positive change.
I think for the impact PBL in our classroom this year versus last year, like Ashley was talking about, I think our students felt really boxed in. I think we felt boxed in, in a way, sometimes, with our, our expectations of how it should look, and with some help from, a lot of help from our PBL coach, Emily Rincomah. She, she gave us the confidence and empowered us to really approach this in a really non-traditional, really flexible way. And in the past, I think, we, we were looking at success in our units as, you know, what does, what does the output look like? You know, how much high-quality work is being produced, and that's, and that's kind of how we were looking at success for your unit. And what Emily challenged us to do is, instead of focusing on the output, 'cause we were noticing a lot of struggles, and we were feeling like students along the way were struggling, and we were having a hard time keeping them engaged, and so we took this shift, instead of focusing on the output, we focused first on the engagement, and really trying to spark their curiosity, and really asking authentic questions, and not, not necessarily leading with a target, or leading with, you know, this is the type of work that we're gonna need to produce, 'cause kids would kind of freeze up. And so, starting with these authentic questions, and, and starting with that curiosity and that engagement, we noticed, similar to what Allison talked about, the kids totally took ownership of what we were doing in the classroom. And we noticed every day that the excitement just built and built, and not just for them, for us, too. And all of a sudden, we're kind of on this ride together. And we've noticed already, I think we can confidently say, in probably this first unit, this first six weeks of school, the output has followed that excitement, and, and we feel like, already in six weeks, our students have probably outdone what they, what they did all of last year, and, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't be more excited to kind of keep it going.
Yeah, the amount of work that they're doing feels a lot more genuine, and they're excited about it, so their output just went through the roof. Whereas if we put an assessment in front of them, they were like, oh, assessment, like, such a trigger word for them. through the roof. Whereas if we put an assessment in front of them, they were like, "Oh, assessment," like, such a trigger word for them. You put something else in front of them that has to do with aliens, or has to do, you know, with the same exact, they're looking for the same result, but they're more engaged and they're finding it themselves. So, it's been really powerful. So, our unit is about, this first unit that we started with, we were thinking about trying to find something that would tie in, our target this time was about credible evidence. So, with the humanities side of it, Matt wanted to do something where students could find, or make a claim, and support their claim with credible evidence. And I thought that, being the science teacher, that we could kind of hit on planets in the universe side of it. And so, we launched with an essential question of, do aliens exist? And from the day, day one, the students were extremely engaged. We, another thing that we did that was really powerful was that we involved our whole school. Students interviewed different people around the school, including Greg Marino, who's in the audience here. And that was extremely powerful, and that, that really hit on some of the transferable skills that students need. You know, being able to go and introduce yourself to the principal of the school, and ask him if he believes in aliens, and having that engaging conversation with someone. And I think that students felt really connected to our school, and felt that people were, not only were they engaged in their learning, but they were able to share that with their essential arts teachers, and the principal, and the gym teachers, or anybody that they were seeing in the hallway. A lot of teachers were reaching out to them, and that kind of validated their learning.
Absolutely. So, and I think seeing, just interactions in the hallway with our students, we worked really hard to, like Ashley said, to embed certain skills within the unit. Emily really encouraged us that, even though we're, we're kind of dealing with this really exciting and polarizing topic like aliens, to also embed some skills that we want to see for students to conduct an interview, you know, to be able to make more connections throughout our school. Those were kind of underlying things that we wanted to hit as well. And seeing them kind of take ownership of this process, and connect with other adults throughout the building, and share with us that, oh, this teacher believes, but this teacher doesn't. I think I'm gonna be able to convince this teacher, I almost got them. It was really exciting to see them take off. And, you know, now, now that we're seeing that type of buy-in, you know, now when we shift more towards really, really getting to our targets and focusing on, all right, you know, what type of evidence can we use to support the claims that we're coming up with? The students are excited, there's all this energy behind it, and the work and the output, and, you know, the really meaningful learning is following right now.
Absolutely. And that's, if you want to show us some of those clips.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the activity they're gonna see, which we're asking the kids to do?
Yeah, yeah. So, what we did was, in this, we started to move towards, this is the first time in the unit that we placed a target in front of them. So, we, during the unit, or during this lesson, went around, Jeff was there, I think, for this entire lesson. We went around and put the targets on their desks. We didn't draw any attention to it, we left them on their desks. And we also put up on the board credible and questionable, which we had used previously as word of the day. So, they were introduced to the words and had a little bit of exposure. And then for this lesson, we sorted, we gave them about ten to fifteen pieces of evidence, of alien evidence. So, some were taken directly from books, and all the sources were listed along with the piece of evidence. And some were hearsay. Were from Ben to Jen to Billy shared that they saw an alien, some from Williston adults. And their job, and you'll see in this activity, is to then individually start by sorting that evidence out, and thinking, coming up with whether or not it's credible to them or questionable to them. And then we move to the next step of kind of sorting with another student, and then kind of vetting each other. So, we'll show you some clips.
Another one of the same activity?
Where did, where did that piece of evidence come from? So, I want to know, is you have, you have something from that same book on the credible side?
Yeah.
But you have, this one on credible, and this one on questionable, and they're both from the same book?
Both, just watch it.
No, I'm wondering what you're reading. You're starting to believe that aliens exist? So, you're putting this one on questionable because it's saying that aliens are real?
Could be real. It's questionable, because they might have seen, or be buried, but I think we will. Even though I haven't seen one, and I would like to drive one, take it from aliens, knock them out, and put them in the back room. It's like, no, I'm here.
I'm excited to speak for, speak for example. They're getting really excited about all of them.
And one of the neat parts about this is that, you know, we started out, like Ashley said, with the independent sorting. We kind of were hands-off, that kids could make decisions about where they were putting credible pieces of evidence, and where the questionable pieces were going. And then as the activity kind of progressed, we would push them a little bit more, and challenge them on their thinking, question them about their sources, and why they made the decisions that they made. One of my favorite moments from this lesson is, is one of the students we were working with. One of the pieces of evidence was that, over their, over a person's lifetime, that one in seven Americans report, has seen a UFO. That was one of the statistics. And so, one of the students immediately put that in the questionable pile, it's like, that's crazy. You know, like, I'm looking around the room, and there's twelve people in this room, and I, that no one here has even seen a UFO. And then, another student was having kind of the same questions, and was going around to every teacher and every student. Have you seen a UFO? Have you seen a UFO? Have you seen a UFO? And eventually, one of our staff, who actually does have a pretty cool story, mentioned that in college she had seen something, and she wasn't quite sure what it was. And I'm sitting with this student, he's got this one in seven statistic in the questionable pile. He hears this, and he picks it up, and then sets it in the credible pile. So, it just allowed us to have some really authentic conversations with students about their beliefs. And it just really felt like they were driving this entire thing.
I think I was the sixth person he asked?
I know, I was worried. I was really, I was really excited that he asked her, because I was like, oh no, we're not gonna be this specific.
She decided she was more credible than I am.
Um, so, yeah, the, the next step is they vet, they start to vet each other, and you see that, and we kind of push their thinking a little bit more. Okay, so that's how you're supporting, so you have questioning for it, right? Yes. Okay, put it right up here. Um, and do you agree with Rella that this is probably a questionable piece of evidence?
I am.
Do you agree with Rella that this is probably a questionable piece of evidence? Okay? Do you agree? So, I've noticed that you're a young girl. Do you have any wonderings about the fact that Bill told, Randy told, or whatever?
It's Saka. No, Randy told Bill.
Kurt told. It's been a lot of people involved. So, does that make the source less credible? One, they're kind of young, two, is there a lot, is there a lot of, like, I told this person, I got this.
So, I, I mean, what this is building towards, and we've done a lot of different activities throughout this unit. We started with the adult interviews across our building. The students compiled all the responses that they got, and they were able to graph the different data. They were looking at trends, they were making predictions, and, you know, things that surprised them. We tied in different, different planets that students wanted to profile, and then did a create an alien unit. Students had to create an alien that could survive the specific conditions on their planet of choice. And what this is ultimately leading up to, and the reason that we're really focusing on this evidence piece right now, towards the end of our unit, is that we're gonna kind of culminate everything with what we're calling dueling essays. So, Ms. Sutton is in charge of writing an essay with a small group that is arguing that aliens do not exist. And I have a small group, and I am writing an essay that argues that aliens do exist. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna post them outside our classroom, and allow different classrooms within the building to vote on, on what their thoughts are after reading our essay. So, our kids right now, now that they've really established their strong pieces of credible evidence for both types of claims, are super excited to sit down with us and write those together, and then kind of see how it all shakes out.
Hopefully, we win.
I'm hoping I win, too.
No, I mean, they're hoping that.
We'll have to keep you guys posted.
Okay, so we've got some time to ask questions of Ashley, Matt, or Allison, if you have any. Colleen?
Hi, I'm Colleen. Just a question about the writing of the argument and making the claims. And you said small group, are, are all of the students required to make a claim after this?
Great question. So, what we are doing, and this is, a lot of this, like, we could not have done any of this without Emily Rincomah. She, she is really kind of this guiding person that's in behind the scenes, that we meet with once a week, and she's phenomenal. So, you know, her, and the thing that she's kind of showed us is that it's about, it's not about how you get there, it's kind of how students get there, it's huge. So, what we're doing right now is, every single student, our students in each group are choosing their piece of evidence, and they're going to help support that piece of evidence. We're helping them make the claim, we're helping them with the finisher, you know, in the leaf paragraph. But they're really having, they're each having some ownership in that piece of writing. And they all know, one of our students said today, they're like, now we've got to start working on our essay. You know, one of the students is like, oh, come on, not the essay. And one of the students is, you know, we don't have to write all of it just yet, we'll probably have to write the rest later in this year. But right now, we're just gonna work on the first pieces. So, they're kind of on to our plan, but, yeah, right now, they're just gonna write pieces of it and help out. And then, together, we're gonna write an essay for this project, and the next project, they'll take on some more ownership.
It seems like good mental gymnastics.
That journey, right?
Absolutely.
Writing essays is a great example, I've seen it universally through all kinds of classes, where the old approach, and I taught English for eighteen years, was, okay, you gotta write an essay. And so, in that essay, I was assessing your ability to create a claim, to use proper grammar, organization, evidence, to analyze the evidence, to prove it supports the claim. And now, it's much more targeted, the focus. So, we provide you the claim, find evidence that supports or refutes it, for instance. Once that's done, once we provide you with evidence, how create a claim, that would make sense. So, it's much more targeted now due to some of the shifts we've made.
Yeah, it just seems like it's forcing the critical thinking on their end.
We've even noticed a, like, a divide in our classroom sometimes, where students are, do they support one claim or the other, and there's having some arguments about where they stand on things. And it's really authentic, genuine conversations.
Natural conversations that are healthy.
And aside from the classroom model, like, do they go outside for evidence?
Absolutely.
I mean, so you get, is that part of their free thought, like, to go wherever they think, you know, Scientific American might have?
Right, to, to expand that research, and how can we continue to support this claim, whatever side you stand on, definitely.
You mentioned that you waited to give them the target, why, why did you wait?
I think, so, I think that the big thing is, last year, we were, I noticed that students were like, the students that I was working with, were just not, not having the best experience of the target. They were tying it to assessments, they were tying it to things that didn't feel successful for them. So, since we waited, and then kind of, they got the work done, and then we, then we talked about the target after, and where they, and like, what they were doing, it felt better to them, it felt more successful. Whereas before, we were putting, I was putting more pressure on the target, and thinking that if I gave them exposure to targets, that they would learn where they are, and they'd be like, oh, I want to move on, or I, but I almost think I exhausted the idea of the target in, in some ways, if that makes sense.
That's another thing we've talked about, is the romance of, of the content. Get them in love with the romance of the content, before you start hitting them with the skills that live underneath the content. Not too many students are gonna come in class and go, oh, cool, using credible evidence to support a claim, I'm so psyched. But, do aliens exist? Get them hooked, and now, well, here's what I'm gonna ask you to do to prove or refute these claims.
So, I'm just curious, what grade is this, the?
Middle school.
So, six, seven, eight, five, six, seven, eight, and twelve-four grades? How do, how are the kids paid for preparing to work in this type of environment?
We will give you some K4 examples, lining some up for next week, and show how it's all sort of interconnected. You know, the biggest difference right now, I think, is that some of the language is a little bit different. We have standards that are aligned with Common Core in K4 that they're working exclusively. The, the common target discussion isn't as advanced as it is in the five-twelves, for the reasons I gave last month, in terms of where we decided to place our priorities first. But you're gonna see some very similar pedagogy.
So, I have a very basic naive question, because I clearly remember in middle school, that little white book of grammar. Did, did anyone else have that little white book of grammar, and we had to, nightmare. But, boy, did we learn how to do this, that, and the other things with adverbs, adjectives, all this other stuff. Does that get, how does that get covered? Like, do you, do you find yourself focusing more on the targets as opposed to the mechanics? And maybe this is the same for you, for a, a math question, too, right? Because you can't do AP Calc if you don't have solid basics. So, how do you, how do you do the targets? Because the targets don't say they know how to predicate a verb. You know, how, how do you, how do you balance the basic skills with the targets?
Yeah, it's a great question, it's been a challenge since the beginning of time for all pedagogy, whether it's standards-based or not. But the primary purpose here is to create these targets that are transferable enough, so that different contents and different levels of complexity can be applied to them. Where it might, where the grammar piece might live, is in my curriculum map, or my trimester plan, that says, here's how I'm applying credible evidence in this unit. We are going to study the Mayans, and we're gonna have to do X, Y, and Z. And it's in a KUD, the things that students must know.
Yep.
Things like that, how to conjugate a verb, how to diagram a sentence, if that's indeed, now you can tell when I went to school.
Well, exactly. I'm not saying that, that's a good way of doing it.
Whatever those essential knows are and understands, they live right in the same document, in the same experience as these targets.
But I have a question, too, especially like, in the three and fourth grade time. Because, one, two, they're getting acclamation of their numbers, their letters, their mechanics. Three and four, they're starting to say, yes, we need to write an essay. It needs to meet certain criteria, certain targets. But specifically in that critical three, four time, you have people maturing at all different levels and rates. So, I've actually personally experienced a little bit of like, we need to get the essay done versus understand why we're conjugating, or spelling, or learning penmanship. And I think that there is a risk here, at, at some point, not necessarily, I love like, the cross-collaboration, but, I mean, I'm a big fan of that. But in, in the really beginning grades with kids at different, and students at different learning levels, of missing out on some basics, and I just need to state that.
Yeah, it's an absolute consideration as we move forward about what are the essential skills to be able to, that are foundational, one, and which ones are sequence, most build one on top of the other. And really, what you're describing is a differentiated classroom, where you are uncovering different levels of understanding, and then try to address those. And it's a huge challenge to differentiate a classroom well. But we continue to, to learn about how the brain learns, and that you need to give them really fixed targets that don't move, and then provide all those underpinnings that you're referring to when it comes to some of this knowledge. But, yes, when I, I taught, like I said, for eighteen years, that challenge was still right to forefront then as well, and, and continues to be, is how do we address deficits that we may notice that have a lot to do about the, what I know and what I understand, getting in the way of what I can or cannot do? One last question?
So, it seems this blended model is working well, at least in the first six weeks of school. Is there a plan to propose it to other schools, middle, you know, like, I think this is Williston, so other schools?
This is Williston, yeah. And I would not, first of all, I would caution us to assume that these things don't necessarily exist, or things like it don't exist in other schools already. This happens to be the example we put in front of you tonight. That's first thing. Second thing is, we are fine, uncovering some successes. And I want to add to the, to what Ashley and- Second thing is, we are uncovering some successes, and I want to add to what Ashley and Matt were saying about finding success for students for whom the traditional approach has not worked very well, is inspiring. And as I was inspired to watch it happen in this classroom and to hear them talk about their learners. And so as we uncover these, we are advancing conversations about how we can institutionalize some of these experiences a little bit more. That's a great question, and a really good one to end on, so we end on time. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate all three of these speakers. Last month, love, two more examples, and try to give you some different grade levels.
Jeff, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Is there a informed and integrative thinking D?
Oh, I'm so prepared for that question, okay. D is, informed and integrative thinking is evaluate the accuracy bias and usefulness of information. So why didn't I give you any examples of that? Let me show you why. So, in A, we had a hundred and thirty learning targets in nine through twelve, twenty for K through eight, seventy-seven, fourteen, one twenty-eight, thirteen. For D, we had thirteen high school targets, one K target. So I had to really look at that and understand it. Let's go back to the one that Ashley and Matt just showed you. I can use credible pieces of evidence to support my claim. I think that's A, right? You can't do A without D. To do that effectively, you have to have evaluated the accuracy and the bias. And so what this has uncovered is that we may have a transferable skill that doesn't need to be there. It needs to be embedded in the scale and the continuum that gets you to be able to use credible evidence effectively. And one of the things we're doing is we're watching, how often are things being instructed and assessed, and we're tracking that. And this is, this is way down there, and so then we have a conversation about how do we revise this document and these expectations. And this is going to come as news to some of the people I work most closely with, but that's one of the things that we're going to have a discussion around, whether it's needed. Because I think we're going to find that teachers are saying, no, no, I'm assessing and instructing that, but it's through a different target, or through a different standard, I'm sorry.
And along that same vein.
Could there be other targets that are pieces that aren't there that should be included?
Yeah, exactly. A better way to put it is, we have to ask the question, why is this being instructed and assessed at a different level than all the others are? I, I give you what I think the answer is, but I will ask the question of others as well. Great.
Okay. While I'm figuring out where we are, I wanted to do just two things. One is, on your agenda on the back, you might notice we have the, all the abbreviations on education so far that we use. Dave's going to compose a song utilizing all of them, because he loves his abbreviations, but, but this was Bonnie's idea. And so thank you for compiling them and putting them together for us. And on that same note, because we now have no more room on our agenda, but equity was something that we talked a lot about at the retreat. Sandy has made up on our table, everybody, every two or three people should have a definition of equity. And this is more just a visual reminder of, you know, kind of where our priorities are. And we will have a bigger copy of the equity definition for our next meeting. So thank you, Sandy and Bonnie, for doing that. Okay, we're on to five point O, reports to the board, five point one committees. Five point one point one, finance.
Oh, that's your, oh, yeah, you're not.
Brendan was not here today, and I was lucky enough to be the note taker for our last meeting, and then he told me he wouldn't be here. So hopefully, if I miss anything, we'll add it. So we talked, we had a really fruitful meeting, and we talked about a lot of different things. So we were talking about budget goals and just looking at some of the operating assumptions that we know have to happen, like that, there's, they just happen. And talking about board goals, so we were talking about equity, and we need to be reminded a little bit about our definition of equity. And we talked about the fact that the CY program grants are continuing to decrease. And so, looking at a new financial model for how to integrate it probably into our wellness programs, which Jean is working with Megan on, I believe. And then we had a discussion about Budget Buddies, which in the past, Budget Buddies have been very critical to the budget process when we've been individual boards. But now that we're a bigger board, there was a lot of discussion about how last year, it might not have been very clear to Budget Buddies of what their roles were, and so we're trying to figure out maybe how better to utilize the community and in what capacity, and then bringing it to the larger board to see if we can make a, make some kind of decision for that. We talked about the strategic model, which our goal is two point three percent. And Jean presented four different plans that all seem to have really great pros and some have some cons, but we'll be able to flush it out a little bit more as the budget gets put forth and comes together. We talked a little bit about a school counselor question, which our committee just disagreed that, that we would need a, the larger board to give the finance committee a directive. Like, we don't decide if, if, we only can figure out the funding for a position, that we don't decide a position. And then we talked about the quarter acre lot that is at Williston Central School that we are going to propose that be sold for the market value of a thousand dollars. It's land that we're not using, and our neighbor would like to use it for a swing set or something for his children. We talked about the food service strategic plan, which is just that, we're not really sure how to fix it right this second. Jean has started talking to the Abbey Group about possibly taking food service out of in-house, but we're not completely sure if that really makes sense or not. So Jean was going to do a little bit more exploratory and research just to see what other districts are doing and what we should be expecting to have to like add in. And then we were just talking about communication, about how we'll work with Bonnie to make sure that the community knows what, what we're doing. I think that is it.
Okay, five point one point two, HR and labor, did Russ ask? What if you break to?
I didn't, I was just reading over the notes, and, you know, we did, Mark gave us a brief on the issue with HRA and staff, and they're catching up, and a decision will be made for next year, within the next month or so. At that time, things are trending positive. You don't need to give us an update, but are they still trending?
Trending positive.
Okay. So the slope of the curve is greater than one?
I got a check ask.
There we go. There's some, there's some, there's some evidence to support my claim. We touched on negotiations for both support staff and teachers. And then, we did have a discussion about conflict of interest regarding contract negotiations. And we had some questions and reviewed a memo from two thousand and one, and then we asked Mark to follow up with Pietro to get some clarification. Those are the big things.
Five point one point three, indicators?
We met and continue to walk through the continuous improvement plan, the acronym decoder is particularly helpful. So, we continue to take a deeper dive into the continuous improvement plan. This time, we looked at MTSS, which is the multi-tiered system of supports in social emotional learning, and understand a little bit better what's happening district-wide. There are some ongoing kind of lead team and auditing processes happening now that might eventually lead to some staffing needs or budget needs, but it probably isn't something we will be able to implement this year. It would be information that would be another year out. But had a quick side, good conversation about the goal, really, I think of this committee eventually is to figure out what the few indicators are that we want to be able to identify clearly for budget goals. So, we probably won't be there this year as a subcommittee to have that information, but hopefully by next year, we're getting to a place where we're honed down to that level so that we can more explicitly link to the budget and budget decisions that we're making. Next, in our next meeting, we'll continue to walk through the plan. We'll go through the pieces around proficiency and personalization, because ultimately this spring, the continuous improvement plan will have to come to the board for approval. So we'll have gotten down to hopefully a digestible summary that we can all take a look at.
Do you think it's promising to come up with, obviously not all the indicators, but start early with, well, these are the three, or two, or one, knowing that it's going to increase instead of waiting a full year? To phase in indicators? I can talk more if you want.
Yeah, I think we'd have to think through that more, because I think what seems like on its surface, a clear indicator, like social and emotional learning, or, there's so many things, they're really so complex. And so defining what would be in that indicator that we would use, I think is.
Is there an easy one?
There are some academic proficiency ones that are easier.
Probably the things that are more like, you know, standardized test score things, and, you know.
I think it would be important to look at, right, to look at multiple indicators rather than just the S P A C, for instance. You'd want to juxtapose that with the Common Assessment System and other data that you might have, classroom data.
The part of it would be the scuffle.
Some of the things like where we are as readers and writers, those are easier to quantify right now than the work that we just talked about last week around social emotional learning.
And I guess I would want to, I think there's some more evidence that we need. I mean, we're using the C I P right now as our baseline, but when we get the integrated field review, and when we get the snapshot, and when we get the student engagement pieces. I think, I think we want to see what all the other pieces are that could help to inform some of the.
Well, let me, let me try to simplify. So, indicators, they're just kind of snapshots of where we are, place and time, Polaroid camera shot. And it's not going to be the whole picture of everything that's going on. All of those different pieces inform the progress of our district. But a few indicators, I mean, what can we put on a public website? These are a few indicators, and they may not be the ones that are your favorites, but they may be ones that are easily communicated to a broad public.
Can you think of like an example? I'm just trying to, it sounds exactly what you're.
Just, you know, basic academic skills like S P A C. I guess I was hearing.
Early literacy, for instance.
Yes. Early literacy, or number of students who take algebra by eighth grade, or.
And I guess I would make a suggestion that we not focus on the S P A C scores, but maybe find an indicator that would be, how many, what percentage of our kids are reading at the end of grade three? We know that is a significant indicator, so we don't need to turn to S P A C. What is it that we have maybe already in our assessment system? That's an easy one, and I think that no one would question that.
Yeah, so it's a few simple ones like that, that can easily be posted for public communications. And then part of the process is, there are committee members working towards coming up with other indicators. It's like, you know, it's, it's, you're trying to, that old metaphor of building an airplane while you're flying it. And, and so you're not going to have the airplane finished, but our community wants to have some sense of, well, how do we know that our kids are getting something out of the time that they spend in school? I mean, we've been working on indicators forever. It's always going to be a moving target.
Okay, anything else? On indicators? Do we want to do policy separate from the policies?
Well, I mean, we can just, the. Right. But I think we also, when we've, we've met twice, and we've had long conversations in the policy committee to come to what seemed like small changes inside the tobacco policy. But it was really interesting because, and maybe I said this at our last meeting, so I apologize, that we had Nick and Rob in there as two house leaders in place of Adam. So they gave us a new, you know, sort of view of all this, and the third person who was there was.
Christine Wood Newberry, director of.
C Y. Oh, it used to be C Y.
C Y, but there as sort of a wellness role.
Wellness role.
And it was really just like a conversation about like, not just, you know, following the policy when a kid breaks the tobacco policy, or an adult, but also just like, if it happens again, or if it happens for other reasons, like pursuing the why and getting, you know, bringing in substance abuse.
The opportunity for intervention?
That, yes. But, so, just, you know, because that's just as important as substance abuse. Thanks.
Okay, Colt?
So, the thing that I would highlight first on the Colt report is, Lynn and I started last month attending the student leadership meetings. So last month, just because it was the first time that we were scheduling it, and we just couldn't schedule to be there together. So I went to one meeting, and she went the very next week to the same meeting. I happened to go to the meeting where they were organizing the principals' leadership council, and it was great. It was so wonderful to see them, like, in their very first meeting, you know, Adam did a little activity for everybody to get to know each other, but like immediately how they were supporting each other and thinking about like the work that they could do at that council. It was also great that at that meeting at the end, when I said, so is there anything that like I can do for you? And they said, yeah, the website, you know, like, there's something that's not working with those K eight links. Well, I was impressed that they're even looking at the K eight links. And there's something about like, you know, like when I try to use it on my iPhone or my iPad, and I know, like, my face dropped, because right when we did this new website, that was one of the key things, it was going to be compatible. So I said, thanks very much, and I went back to the office, and I sent a note out to Mike Canfor, and he goes, wow, thanks for the heads up on the K eights. There was something wrong with it. And the, the mobile link, that was something on them. There was just something that they needed to do. But, it was like great to be able to just turn it around and send Adam a note right away and say, let the kids know that we thank them for having brought this to our attention, and we can do something about it. And then Lynn, you went the next week, right?
I went the next week, and I had started on the student, going through the student engagement survey, which they took last spring. And Adam was going through it to get feedback from the students. And actually, what came up out of it, a tangential conversation, was the kids started saying, we get way too many emails. I guess you guys can email to like, email all, see, and they're like, we get hundreds, or, I don't know, dozens and dozens and dozens of emails. And Adam's like, what? What do you mean you get dozens of? And so it was fascinating, a similar concern, you know?
And great engagement with us too, I thought.
So we're going to see.
We have a schedule for the rest of the year.
Student council, and we're seeing the athletic leadership council, and the think tank, and the, I don't know, we're very busy.
It's going to be great. It really is a really, really good addition to, a way for us to, you know, hear student voice.
And for them to give us. Not that you guys don't give us feedback as well, but yes.
So then the other thing that you might have been wondering about was why there was this whole big summary on district management, council district management group, and that's because last, at the end of last meeting, one of the board, you, said to me, you know, like, I just get confused with all of this DMG, DMC stuff, and you guys, me, others, refer to it as if everybody understands the history of it. So this was an opportunity to say, because we have a long history with them. In the state of Vermont, probably one of the two districts that have the longest standing relationship with them. So this was just a way to kind of summarize it, so that you'd see the two major pieces of work that we've done with them, and then how that led to the work that the legislature and the entire state is doing with them, so. Any questions about the report?
The principals' report? Any questions on the principals' report? It was another interesting topic, I thought. All the different schools, how they're all doing it.
Yeah.
Our first ever student council, written student council report. Thank you. Do you guys want to?
They suggested it.
I think it's a great idea.
Do you guys want to highlight anything or talk, say?
Yeah, I'd love to take any questions that you guys have about it. These were just some of the big things that student council specifically was working on. I know lots of times we give you a little sum of what's happening in the school too. Recently, our ACLC, which is our academic leadership council, we have a lot of leadership councils at CVU.
Good thing.
Yes, so that seniors are going out and a lot of people are doing. It's a way for seniors to give back to the CVU community and even the CVSD community as a whole. So it's a lot of TA-ing, which I'm doing, or tutoring one-on-one with students or things like that, which is really great. Obviously, last week was a very difficult week, but I'd like to echo what Lynn said and that Adam and his support staff were very, very supportive of the student body during that time. So I thought that was really great. Kate, I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
No, I think the only other thing that wasn't on there is we just had member at large interviews. So our council is growing and it's probably more diverse with more ideas and opinions, so.
That's a good thing too. I thought that the whole, the thing that you're doing with the club fair, is that a new thing this year or does that happen every year?
The club fair happens most years. And did we mention, yeah, what we're trying to get to have to happen and we have been for the past couple of years, is also a class fair so that students can know what courses are actually available to them and get some, yeah, information on those from students who have taken them before. But yes, the club fair does happen.
That's a great idea.
How many students are on student council?
It's between 20 and 30 usually.
I think that's where we're going next at 7:10 a.m.
Yes.
Every, every Thursday. We'll be there. We should bring food one of these times.
You volunteered to go to how many councils?
Once a month.
Oh.
There are some that are twice a month. Yeah. Institutionalizing is good practice. Okay, 6.0 discussion matter, 6.1 policy. So who's leading? Do you want us to lead this? I think that's the best birthday present we could give you is letting you lead the policy discussion.
Sure, thank you very much.
Is this your birthday?
Yes.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
The first three policies are policies that currently exist. They're part of the cycle. The committee felt there wasn't any need to edit them in any way. If you find something in particular, I would encourage you to reach out. Bill, at next meeting, we'll ask you to reaffirm those three policies. The, the fourth one is something that has been talked about, which is the tobacco prohibition policy. And what the committee has done has expanded that to encompass new types of nicotine delivery systems, in particular concerning electronic nicotine devices, but covering a larger scale if that exists. So the two changes to that policy in general would be encompassing that larger group of things and also adding a piece where a student who violates the policy, there's not only the, what's called punishment piece, but also the piece where someone could be referred to, a professional in the building to help with an addiction. So those, you'll see the code itself is highlighted where some changes were made. It's not, it doesn't come out too clearly in black and white. I'll try something different next time, but you can see where the changes were made. And there'll be, that's open for discussion.
Yeah, no, that's, that's it, the way we usually do it, so.
Can I ask a really naive question?
That's the second time you've said you're asking a naive question today.
I'm feeling very naive tonight. I'm not as old as Mark, I think, so I can be naive. Can you have tobacco without nicotine or nicotine without tobacco?
The concern that we've been talking about is nicotine without tobacco.
Okay.
So the thing, the vaping is nicotine without tobacco. And what Christine Lloyd Newberry was telling us at our last meeting is a Juul cartridge, which is a brand of vape. A Juul cartridge can contain in its cartridge as much nicotine as an entire pack of cigarettes. Now, I, I must admit not being familiar with exactly how they're used. If you pop in a cartridge and do it and use it all at once or if it lasts a week or something. But how it's being used and being marketed is concerning.
But tobacco, do all tobacco, I'm assuming cigarettes or something, do they always have nicotine? Or can you have like a nicotine free? I, I guess I'm getting to, do we have to have both tobacco and nicotine in the policy? Or is there like one big over, like does nicotine over-urchinly cover it? I don't know.
Well, this is a federal.
Yeah, so the tobacco policy, we're expanding on a policy we're required to have, which is the tobacco piece, right, it's federal and state.
Okay, so you can have tobacco without nicotine?
I don't know the answer to that, truthfully. I don't think that's true. I think tobacco, I, it would be like removing a piece of it out, but I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Be like decaf coffee.
But they're both bad, so they both need to be specified. Okay, that was my question.
Question, what about tobacco use off the school property on scale activities such as field trips?
Although this particular policy, because it's based on the federal language, is concerned with school grounds, I would have to see how it interacts with the field trip policy.
Isn't there a section on co-curriculars in there?
School-sponsored events are treated with the same policy.
Right, but it didn't say anything about.
Yeah, it's not, so I'll, I'll get you the exact quote out of the, there's a field trip policy that would apply. If it's not, it's something we can cover.
And I noticed it's referenced at the bottom, which means there's some linkage.
Yeah, there is some linkage, that might just be the co-curricular. But, yeah, we can make that clear. It's a good question.
Not a problem, as long as it's somewhere in there.
Yep.
There's a piece of this that's educational as well. I think there, you know, a lot of us are not familiar with electronic devices to deliver nicotine. And, you know, for many young people, they're being marketed to with it. And so there's just part of a big conversation that's happening in the school. I don't know, Kate or Kyle, if you want to speak to conversations that happen in the school related to, you know, Adam saying, you know, beginning of the year, informing students. Does he, you have an opportunity to talk about it?
We did have a conversation, I know my grade did at our assembly this year. We had a conversation about it at the beginning of the year because I knew last year it was a growing problem. And there hasn't been much conversation about how big of a problem it is this year. But last year, they definitely had a big problem with it.
Yeah, I think my grade, that conversation happened last year. And yeah, it is a big problem.
So it's just something that's kind of snuck up on us and so we're.
On everybody here. So is there any more input to the policy committee on any of these policies? Because they'll take our input, incorporate it back and then it'll come back to us next month for approval. Anyone has any more input?
One, one aspect of our conversation was the question of if a student is found to have been using or in possession of tobacco or nicotine products. It sounds like to me that sometimes that student might be referred for a substance abuse assessment, sometimes not. And I don't, I don't know that we had, we weren't able to meet this current week. I don't know that we came to a final decision about that. My, there was some discussion about whether or not that would become routine, that in fact, given the highly addictive nature of nicotine and the age of students we are working with, would it be best to make it routine that there would at least be an assessment made to determine whether or not this was an experimentation versus somebody who is really in, really hooked, really in trouble.
So we, I did write in, based on our conversation, I did write in that option to refer a student, which was not in there before, to refer them to social, to SAP. It is not written as a mandatory language.
Right, it's worded as maybe referred. And so that was, that was a question that I continued to have as to whether or not that would be, and who would make that decision? Who would that be up to in terms of whether or not that referral would occur or not occur versus it being part of the embedded practice? That this is what happens when someone is found to have been struggling with this kind of infraction.
I think, I think the way that conversation went from my eyes was putting the language in there that substance abuse counselors are available to be used in this situation was new. And then putting in the words maybe gives people the option to sort of, you know, is it experimentation or is it addiction? It gives people to evaluate it based on the situation.
Do we have the same language in our drug and alcohol policy that they may be referred? Or are they automatically referred in that?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Do not know off the top of my head.
We're working on that one, so.
I kind of feel, and this is just me as a parent, I feel like they should be treated the same. I don't think, I want to say that nicotine and tobacco is of any less of addictive quality or experimentation than we do with drugs and alcohol.
So, yeah, I, I agree. And I think that this step here was at least putting in some sort of, not just hammer, but also some kindness to go with it, you know, to be like, you know, what are the next steps?
I'm just thinking we need to be consistent.
Yeah, yeah. We'll take that under advisement.
We, thank you.
Erin, if we're going to think about revising policy to essentially mandate that kind, I would like to hear some input from administrators at the CVU level because I worry a little bit about unfunded mandate, that the resources, I mean, how prolific this is, like that could tie up a lot of work for people. And, and I think thinking about budget priorities and indicators and trying to be more conscious of what are the repercussions of our decisions, I would want to explore that before we change policy language.
And there's nobody on the policy committee who bangs that drum more than Russ Cafrey. And so that, you know, it's too bad. Could someone write him a memo and just tell him that I said that about him? But I think it's, that's what also gives the, like, the opportunity is there, but it's not always mandated. And I think that's what we were looking for here.
So I just made a note to talk to Adam about that too.
Yeah, I mean, Rob and Nick were very involved in this conversation and that is sort of where we landed.
Their recommendation was to, you know, have it as an option, but not a requirement because it just, it depends on the context, the situation and, and it's, it's. As Erin noted, it's widespread, so be careful what you put into policy.
But at the same time, I think, and you folks can comment on this being students, I think one of the most important things we did in this policy was put in items that were not cigarettes and were not snuff and were not chewing tobacco. Like opening it up such that these things are now included. You cannot get away with this. And I think that kind of was the vibe I was getting from Adam, from Principal Bunting last year, that it was out of, out of control because kids didn't really think that there were any boundaries.
They were looking for backup for treating it one way or another.
Well, nobody thought it was wrong in any way because it's just marketed.
What could be wrong with inhaling a nicotine or non-nicotine substance that's been heated to a very high temperature and inserting it into your lungs? What would be wrong with that?
Yeah, there you have policy meetings in a nutshell.
Oh, mine, okay then.
I would like to acknowledge that for the first time ever, Colleen used the term building the airplane while flying it and then made a statement which implied that they were actually flying the airplane to a destination. I've never heard anyone actually use that analogy and then say like, well, while we're flying this thing there.
One can be hopeful.
That's very, very positive and optimistic. It was great.
Okay, focus, we're back to focusing. Four point, 6.2, VSBA resolutions, because that's something to be focused on. So.
Who groaned there?
That was Jean groaning. There are 19, I believe, resolutions that you have entrusted me to vote on. Does anyone need to see the 19? Has everyone had a chance to look?
If you haven't read them yet, then we're not going to.
We're not going one through three, so.
Just one copy.
We're going to see with the speed readers and.
I think, I guess this is kind of where I would like to go with this. If anyone has read them and has strong opinions on them, I would be happy to take the opinions down. I think my, I did read them. And I, and I actually listened to the video too because it gave some of the background. And I have to say, I do, I do agree with the recommendations that the VSBA made. Their executive committee. Their executive committee, so.
They have a very, very thoughtful process with the resolutions. And I think unless there's something really egregious, their recommendations usually stand.
So I guess, not to dictate this discussion, but essentially, unless anyone feels strongly or feels differently, my plan is to vote as the VSBA voted. Does anyone, is everyone okay with that? And I did note that Burlington School District had quite a few. Really? Lots of them.
They've had big turnover on the board in the past year.
Any, anything else?
I haven't noticed, just we have had this discussion about frustration with state government or Governor about the cycle and when does he, that's pretty clear. And a couple of different districts have put forth policies speaking to that exact.
And propose joining remotely. So did everyone get the VSBA email today? They did send out with the link to click on if you want to attend the business meeting remotely. It said to click, click this link, so hopefully that link works. If anyone didn't get it and is interested, I think it starts at 3 o'clock. Colleen and I will be there. Is anyone else going actually? That's all I knew was the two of us.
We were all missing the fun.
It starts at 3 o'clock on Thursday, so.
So I would remind you that we had a conversation in the executive committee about VSBA dues. And then that led to a internet search for VSBA budgets and finances, which I was unable to find online. But they are part of the business meeting, so if you could take some nice notes on the finance report and report back to us, that'd be great.
I will.
Thanks.
And they were not, if they're not posted online, we could request that they are posted online.
Yeah.
Just when we come back, we're just going to have a little debrief of the, of the meeting as well as just kind of go over what being a VSBA member means, what it costs, what our benefits are, that whole, that whole piece.
Cool.
Okay. 6.3, communication plan. So this is put on here as a discussion matter. It started off, we talked about when we dissolved the communication committee and it was kind of decided, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that each committee would kind of take hold of a piece of the communications and within that committee develop the communication for whatever, for the community, for whichever month. And we put out, I think all of the chairs of the committees and Colleen and Kelly got CC'd and then all the COLT team got CC'd the link to the board, the calendar to add ideas for how to, when we're going to do these topics. What was never really discussed was once something was drafted, then what? You know, once Bonnie works with the COLT team and, and the board or the committee chair, what happens to that then? And so we kind of had a behind the scenes conversation because we have some budget information that needs to get out, that it seemed to make sense if the committee chairperson, myself, Colleen as vice chair, and then the COLT member associated with the committee and Bonnie would kind of have the final eyes on the document. I think nothing would go out before the entire board, you know, has a chance to look at it. I think we've done that in the past is so, you know, if your name is attached, attached to it, to use Jean's language, I think you should know what's being put out in your name. But I don't think we need an entire board, an entire COLT team drafting a document. But I don't think we need an entire board, an entire cult team drafting a document. So I guess I wanted to just put out there for discussion if, if that seems to make sense to you all, in terms of how we deal with the communications coming from the committees. And then, Kelly?
Yeah, so just to back up a piece, please. So as the chair of the communications committee last year, and a person who really did the communications for the past three years for the board, no, we didn't decide just to end the communications committee, because it was sort of a redundant committee. We ended the communications committee because we put together a platform for communications for the board, for the new person to follow. So Elaine knows, the communications chair was never asked to sit in on the board committee position for the new communications person. I have yet to be consulted about what our activities were on behalf of the communications committee last year. I've gone on to the finance committee. I worked with Barbara Ann, who was our interim communications person, although maybe not the best qualified for the position, but certainly very cooperative person. Everybody should have access to, and she, I know she gave it to the administration. We have a full five-page report of topics, of items to be shared on websites, a timeline for Facebook, a timeline for flyer distribution, how front porch forum looks like, what topics we have, what we did last year with consolidation and the budget. We spent hours, hours, I went through every budget thing that we did for the past five years in terms of communication, to put together a flyer to start to develop a platform, so when communications comes from our board, it's in a, a likable, friendly format. So none of this has been passed on. So I was really shocked when I just received, hey, I put together a first draft, through no offense, 'cause you had no idea that any of this happened. But I don't know where any of this works, and poor Bonnie said that she never had access to any of it. So I wanna know where all the work went. I think there was a ton of hours by a very committed group in communications, and you have a really great start for the work that you wanna do as far as communications to the community.
But we still need, I, I, I do not know where all of that is.
Yeah.
I do, I do have access to the plan. What I didn't have access to is just that flyer.
Do you have it now, though? 'Cause she paid for, we paid, as far as I understood.
We have plenty of copies of it.
No, no, no. We paid for certain software last year.
No, it was done through Lucid Press, which is part of our district, so we've done that.
So we have it, right? So you had, so I have, you have it. I mean, I can give it to you, like, online.
Right.
Yes.
But I don't have access to the flyers, and a few things like that. I mean, I have the whole plan.
I mean, I can give you my passcode, like, I have access to it.
Right.
So if Barbara didn't leave that kind of, I mean, you ha, you will have that.
I think Mike Canfor's trying to get the passcode, too.
And, and, yeah, I've been working with Mike on that, too.
Okay, but that still doesn't get us, so that's a bigger, that's the higher level plan. I'm, I'm now, I guess maybe I'm zeroing in on, like, the specific, okay, we need to get this out on the, I can't remember, like, the school resource officer, you know, who's gonna write that article? Who's gonna do?
Right, so given that, right, so given then that, so that's the macro, right? The big, the big picture of the communications. So given that, you're absolutely right, then that is why the communications committee sort of went away, because we have all of these other committees that are doing these things. So you're right, not the whole board perhaps does not need to write every single letter to the editor. And certainly with an awesome person here, we can have a house for that. So I, I would agree with that. If you, if we come up based on an agreed schedule of, like, what our topics are gonna do, and now, like, okay, it's a great time to say something about the resource officer, maybe that comes from the human resources group, right? So they draft a letter, and then that's their first draft before it goes out to the, to the greater public. The board should be aware of it, hey, our local newspapers are gonna have a letter about the resource officer, heads up.
Right, so that's just, that's, but I don't, I didn't wanna just declare, okay, everybody now, this is how, this is who's gonna be responsible. I wanted this to be a group discussion of how we, you know, instead of just handing it to the communications committee like we did last year and say, you guys run for it. And, you know, it's unfair to put it all on Bonnie to say, you figure out what we want and, and go off and write it. I, I guess I just need input from the board that, that as the, like, mu, much of the budget stuff is gonna come out of the finance committee. Who's gonna be responsible for working with Bonnie to make sure that that comes together? Who's gonna work with Erin? I love how you put LJ next to my name on some of those things, on that.
I'm getting a little confused between the conversations here. So are we talking about a different kind of communication than, like, what Kelly's talking about, which was sort of taking a look at the calendar year, the things that we knew would be important to communicate, and having a plan for those? Are we talking about sort of a second layer of communication?
So I'm not talking about the big communication plan, 'cause I think that's a different piece, the front porch forum, all of that. I'm speaking, I guess I'm talking about just the specific letters that are going to the community in the papers.
But that's what this is. But that's the same thing. It's one in the same. These are all the articles.
So when we, so when we talked, when we talk about the school resource officer, we're gonna put that on front porch forum?
Absolutely, that's one of our channels of communication.
And Facebook?
Mm-hmm. When we put a letter in, if we wrote a letter, a monthly letter, we would put it in all of the papers, the local papers. We'd let the papers run it first, because they like to have that first print time, and then that letter would go up with a letter from one of the communications people, sometimes Barbara, directly, with a link to where it was locally, but it would be on front porch forum.
Okay, but the communications committee drafted that letter?
No, not necessarily. So that's, so.
I guess that's what I'm getting at, is who's doing the drafting.
Barbara didn't draft all the letters, actually. It came from different people. Like, sometimes if the language needed to come from budget, Jean actually drafted some language. I did most of the editing on those letters last year as the communications director, but.
And then people adapted for their local front porch forum.
And then people adapted based on what it, what it was.
Okay.
So I hear what you're saying, there should be a point person on each committee. Maybe that's the question. Each committee go back, talk to your chair, and, and my thought was there should be a point person on each committee that would work with the new communications person. Because I disagree. I think that it absolutely a hundred percent is the role of the communications person, based on the direction of the board, to craft a universal message over anything that we send out.
So we're saying the same thing.
Yes, we are.
And you're, you're saying pick a person, and I'm saying that person should be the committee chair. That's, that's the only difference in what we're saying.
Well, I didn't, yeah, if it needs to be the committee chair, then.
Committee, committee chair or designee, but leave it up to the committee chair to have that conversation.
To do it.
Not, like, from each committee.
There, so she doesn't know yet that Brendan had just suggested, so we're all taking turns, taking notes, and then, like, crafting the, the report that would then go into, to go to the report that everyone receives. And Brendan wanted to talk with Kelly to see if, instead of her having to take that task on, she would be exempt from having to take the notes and crafting it all, and, like, Kelly would be our point person to, to be putting out communications. So that's something the finance, the finance committee had been talking about. But that's only if Kelly wants to do it. But Brendan was thinking it would make sense to have one person be the person who's communicating with Bonnie, putting out our message, and it, like, starting off with maybe a paragraph or whatever it is that we wanna get out there, and then Bonnie crafting something larger, I think is what our conversation was about.
Yes, and 'cause last year, when we dissolve, when I proposed that we dissolved the communications committee, that was the model that I proposed it upon, that it made more sense, it was more effective. We were five, four or five people sitting in a room talking about communications, and I found myself making a lot of outside phone calls across the committees to see what was relevant and what was important to, so that is the model which predicated the.
Right. So that's, and I guess I just, you know, as we had our first piece come out, it's, it wasn't, that was never really institutionalized, what exactly, who should be looking at it, you know? I don't wanna be the only one looking at it. So who, who else needs to be, have eyes on it and says, yes, this is good to go, shared with the board for final okay, not to, you know, recraft the whole thing like I did with the budget flyer last year, and then have it go out? I think the other pieces with the platform, all of that piece, I mean, I honestly, I, I do think it's a conversation between you and Bonnie, since you know, you have that all. I, I don't know.
Oh, I do, too. I've just never been invited to the table to have the conversation. So it's just interesting that after all these months, yes, this information exists, and I'm the house of this information, and I've been doing this information for the past three years, but I should be part of the conversation, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Well, I can't order anyone to do anything, but could I suggest perhaps that Bonnie, you and Bonnie get together and pass that along, and then, maybe then Bonnie has a better idea of the structure? In the meantime, I will send out to all the committee chairs to either appoint, let Bonnie know who she should be expecting to hear from, when we talk about things.
Can I, can I just offer, I, I want, I wanna make sure that I understand the question before the board. So it's the question before the board, seeking agreement about a communication structure where each committee, the chair facilitates a conversation, and they, the group decides to have a designee that is the point person for communications for that committee. It could be the chair, or it could be somebody else, but the chair of each subcommittee has that conversation in the group. They appoint a designee to the communications, and then that person becomes the point person for Bonnie.
Bonnie to go, to go with.
And then, okay, so that's, that's one question before the board, is if there's agreement on that, does that make sense? Are the people hearing that same thing?
Yeah.
And then the second piece might be, when there is a communication that goes out from the board, what's the body that needs to review before it goes out publicly?
I.
And the question is, you know, part of me says, oh, leave it to a subcommittee, another part of me says, gee, I wanna be careful with what goes out with the board's name on it, so.
Go ahead.
Kind of, maybe we're overcomplicating this a little bit. In the past, when we were locals and we had this sort of thing, the one person that approved it to send out was the chair.
Yeah.
I don't see any reason to change it.
Well, except, oh, once it's all crafted.
Once it's all done, you know, there's, there's, otherwise it's gonna be rounds and rounds and rounds of back and forth and, and redrafting and stuff, and honestly, you're not gonna get stuff out fast enough. And, and it's just gotta be simpler.
I, I am fine with that, as long as the committee chair that's working with Bonnie on the article has signed off on it. And then I'm happy to review for it.
Makes great sense. Then it comes to you, give it a final look. Good to go.
And I think you see, too, Bonnie, that, like, the, the platform, now notwithstanding, we have had emergency things that have had to come out and, like, bump other articles, but you have time, there's planning, you know, there's an adequate space to plan, so it's.
I was just gonna make a comment, that it's fascinating how hard communication is, right? Communication should be the easiest thing to do, and sometimes it's not the easiest thing to communicate.
That's why you have to be explicit about it.
And I think people take it for granted. You would never hire someone for free to do the finances.
Well, Jean has offered to go for salary.
Unless we have Jean.
Paper pageant.
Now we pay Jean. She's tired of doing it for free.
So there, there's one place where there may be some opportunity for some local input, and that might be, you know, the posting to the front porch forum. I guess you have full access, but at some point we might have a conversation, does it help to have a local voice be the author? I don't know.
Absolutely does. There has to be one person from every town that writes that letter.
Yep, that's, that was really important.
And I think we did that for the budget last year.
'Cause I know that I would twist it, not twist, but.
Yeah, we'd have a stock letter.
Revise it for my local community.
And then, and then three sentences could come out, whatever. It wasn't even that crafted. I would just, we'd just hand out a stock letter, and then the local person could put it on Heinsberg or Shelburne or.
Kelly, you said everybody had a copy of that.
Well, I can re, I'll re-forward it. I have all, I have everything, you can have everything.
Okay, that would be, that would be really helpful. Thank you for, thank you for doing that.
So maybe it will help if the point person for each subcommittee comes from different towns, and then we.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
That would just be coincidental, that would not be planned.
Anything else on the communication plan?
Thank you for having this discussion. It's a very difficult conversation sometimes to try to bring up old practice and figure out how we got to where we are, so.
Well, I think it was a loose, it was a loose end that never got tied up in the, in the end, so we're tied. And now, moving on to six point four, the Williston property purchase. And again, this is just a discussion.
So this is a discussion in, in preparation for action next month? So we always try to discuss it first, so just be aware it's gonna be action next month. I, I can't remember, I've talked about this so many times with so many people over the year, the board is set, is that familiar with this? But Jocelyn did a good job of just sort of the highlight, which is that a, a very good neighbor of Williston Central School wants to buy this little quarter acre piece that's a butts his property, so he can have some place space for his kids. We've been going around in circles with him for a while, because by statute, the electorate has to approve a sale of school land or skill, school buildings, and we had to do some, some research to figure out if that meant it had to go on the Australian ballot, had to explain to people in Charlotte why they wanted to vote yes on it, but, but the, the end result was that everyone's comfortable that it can go on the annual meeting, as a warning there. So with that, it's, he's paying for all the lawyer's fees, and I have not heard any complaints. I did talk to the former Williston board members, because this is like the second time he's been around, and I wanted the history on it, but no one's had any complaints about it. But I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
So, did we talk about this?
Yes. That was about a year and a half ago. It was like one of the first things I ended up on my plate.
I've got a couple of concerns about it.
Okay.
It's, although it's a relatively small piece of land, it's, it's kind of in a pinch point, and we've had some precedent before around this, where it's located, it's right as that road curves to go around back into the recreational area. And the land contains both a large culvert that continues on along back into our property. I would assume that we're keeping that. Is that true? Is the culvert still our responsibility, or are we selling the property with the culvert? Needs to be maintained. This, it's also, it's literally a pinch point. If we ever need to sand that roadway or do something different, we're limiting our options greatly. And we've had precedent with that before with other neighbors in that neighborhood who've asked to purchase property, and we have denied it to them because we didn't wanna give up that right of way. And then the other thing is, if you look at the map that's, that was given out, it's old and not accurate. There are now eight houses that extend back beyond there. There's a sidewalk that goes across from that road into that new neighborhood, and I'm not sure where the, the request abuts. Does it, is it before that sidewalk? Is it after that sidewalk? And then finally, what is this intention with it? I don't, I don't want to see, you know, buildings put up perhaps, or more pavement, or, you know, there's a, it's a natural piece of land, it's, there's woods that basically obscures part, part of that neighborhood, and I guess for the thousand dollars, my opinion right now, I don't see any financial reason or any reason at all to do it, other than he's a good neighbor, and I understand that, but I don't think that protects our interests.
Okay.
So if I indicated differently previously, I hadn't thought it all the way through, and I apologize.
Quite, quite verbiage, and we're pretty far into this with him, so maybe you and I are gonna have to go take a walk and perhaps adjust the boundary lines?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I drove through there tonight, and I just, it's, maybe all of my concerns can be delayed, I really, but I just wanna make sure that we address them.
There.
Says in the description, it's bounded on all sides by drainage ditches, except where it abuts the.
His property.
His property.
Right, right. And his stated thing now is, it's pretty swampy. His stated now is that he just wants to use it for, you know, land for his own kids, but there's nothing, once we sell it to him, that says he can't change his plan.
Right.
And that, and that was the history.
I actually think my, honestly, my biggest concern is just that it's that pinch point, and, and we've, in the past, made tough decisions, saying, I don't know if we wanna limit our sales.
That's news to me. So I will, I guess we'll have to have more conversation, when that's why we discussed this before we vote.
Well, and we have some time. I mean, we don't have.
Right, absolutely have time. You don't have to, you don't have to, you won't notice until January.
Is there any other input on the, on it? Thank you. Six point five, S O R contract update.
So again, this is the discussion prior to, hopefully, action in two weeks, if we can make sure we have a quorum in, at the November committee meeting. So again, this is, um, the discussion prior to hopefully action in two weeks if we can make sure we have a quorum, uh, in, at the November committee meeting.
Okay.
Um, Adam and the, uh, police department and the town of Shelburne all sat down and worked out a contract that's multi-pages long. Uh, this is sort of the highlights. Um, I spelled that for you in case there was, you know, questions or things we should adjust before, um, we close this agreement.
Is, is the contract truly between, the contract says it's between CVSD and the town of Shelburne, but the language in here talks about providing an SRO to CVU, but not to our other schools. So wouldn't it make more sense to make sure that the language throughout just talks about CVSD as opposed to just CVU?
Well, we've had some confusion, um, in the community that this is a CVU officer. I mean, he will be spending about 15% of his time in the other schools on relationship building things, but this is not an all district officer who's gonna be, so this, so I was comfortable with this being identified as the CVU school resource officer who also will occasionally be spending time in the other schools.
Is that spelled out anywhere else in the contract?
It just says the, that the, that the place of his, uh, employment would be, you know, his, his main campus would be here. And that he would occasionally be off campus for other things, including this sort of outreach work.
So this says it's a summary of the contract. I'm assuming the contract itself is much more explicit with the language, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
And what, I don't know. I guess I'm a little, if the, maybe I just need to read the contract language. The perils of being married to a dang attorney with the details.
Well, Mark and I had a long conversation about this, about the board's responsibility for reading contracts.
Summary?
As opposed to, you know.
Right. Well, I mean, when, if I, if I just read this, because Jean, I know how much we like to fight with each other, but-
They do.
If I do just read this, I mean, I would never know that this SRO was gonna be with any other school other than CVU. And I understand that principally it's at here, but why can't we just say 85 at CVU and 15 at other schools?
Well, I don't know that by contract we want to tie ourselves to that. I mean, it's really, it's gonna be a, a discussion between what works with the, with the lead organization and, I mean, that's the intent and that's the, but I'm not sure we want to do that. What if it wants, needs to be 16% or it needs to be 10%? You know, it's a, I think we, a three-year contract, maybe we want to leave that on quite so specific.
Can we at least have language that say?
How about outreach to other schools or something?
Without any percentage.
Oh, yeah. There's, there's a long, there's, there's a list of things in there that will be reasons when he's not on campus here.
Okay. Um, my other, I don't mean to hog the, but I am. Um, what, what do we do if, if they're sick? I mean, is, is this SRO the only SRO? This person, Sam Smith, is gonna be our SRO. So if he is sick, do we have a replacement SRO or?
We would have a replacement officer.
Okay.
We can't, you can't guarantee that it would be, you know, trained as an SRO, but we would have, in the contract it says that the Shelburne Police Department would, you know, if he's sick for one day, you know, maybe not an issue. If he's gonna be out for more than that, that they would, um, replace him with another officer.
So the expectation is there will be some-
An officer here.
Okay. Somebody else talk.
Well, what I'm hearing from Lynn is a request that in the official contract, it's this maybe not to be reflected in the summary, but the official contract perhaps has language that allows for, um, you know, the officer works for CVSD with, um, you know, 85% of time at CVU and 15% of time doing outreach or something like that, or time to be mutually agreed upon. But would that satisfy your interest in having it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't need a percentage. I just, I just think it, it's, and, and I don't doubt that the, the intent is for it. I just think I would like to have it spelled out.
I thought I heard at the end of that that Jean said, oh yeah, there's a whole bunch of things that are called out in the contract that are-
Right, that, that wasn't summarized too.
So, you know, maybe you don't have to give us the whole contract, but if Lynn has a specific set of questions, if there's certain things in the contract that that language covers, I think that'd be good.
I guess, I argue the opposite. I would love to hear the conversation about the board's responsibility to read contracts because right now you're looking at a summary and you don't know what the, I wouldn't, I mean, we, the questions you're having might have been answered.
So there's three people who wanna, really deeply want to see the contract, but they're, some of them are starting to say, maybe we're not allowed to see it. But I think you don't have to give us every single, you don't have to give us every single contract, but if somebody asks, it should be easy to say okay.
It's, it's a public document. It's a public document. Anybody can look at it as soon as it's done. So, I mean, I could be happy to share it. We just had a conversation about do we have 15 people trying to write a contract? That's all.
I don't want to write.
I don't want to write it. I want to read it. And I think, I think if we're gonna vote on it, I think it's fair that we have, we see a copy of it.
There's language that we would expect and, you know, we sign off on the teachers' contracts and so forth and, yeah.
Fair.
Mark?
It's his birthday.
Happy birthday.
Well, I, I mean, Jean said it's a public document. So as soon as it, and part of it is, is it still, this is a summary of the main points that have been agreed upon, but it's documented in flux.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, at, at the margins. Um, but, you know, sure, something about like majority of the time being spent at CVU, uh, and leaving some little wiggle room, uh, for that expectation of going out to, uh,
The K's.
Yeah, K's can be strengthened or, or looked at, sure.
And just simple things like the word the versus a.
Mm-hmm.
It's not the person. It could be a person.
So there goes our thing that we were just trying to make a case to get the contract so that we could read it and then somebody's trying to change it.
No, no, no. I, yeah.
I-
I trust that it's, it goes by all the attorneys that it needs to go by.
Yep.
And what we're interested in is what's the public communication piece related to this. And I heard Lynn's concern is that public expectation is that there's going to be outreach in the K eight buildings. And so we want to be sure to communicate that as part of this contract. Is, is that fair? Quick summary?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I wasn't sure. I, I, that's why I asked the question is, is it spelled out further in the contract? I, if it's only a three-page contract and we're voting on the, on the contract to approve the contract, I'm assuming that's the next, the action matter in November.
Yes.
I, I do think that, um, we should be, we should read the contract, understanding that, you know, we're not rewriting it. I think it's fair enough.
It's fair.
I would, one thing I just heard, one thing I thought of when I heard you say that you wanted to try and hurry up and get it approved in our commi, as a preamble to our committee meetings. Is that, is that open enough to the committee or to the public?
Absolutely.
If we do that? Whereas so many people expect that this is our business meeting and that it might, you know, they might miss that.
Well, and there's also the piece, we don't negotiate contracts in public.
No, I'm not saying that, but I just, I think that, um, there's, I don't know, I think folks are genuinely more concerned about the SRO arriving in our school for both sides of the, of the argument. And is it, is it okay to approve the contract on our committee night versus our regular business night?
This is my personal opinion. I think that, and this is not gonna come out correct, but we've been talking about this SRO since last spring. And, and I think before the board decided whether to get the SRO, that to me was a time for the community to, I mean, they can always provide input, but I think influencing whether the board went for it or not, that was the time. Where now we've decided, yes, we're having one.
Yeah.
I don't know that the contract is necessarily the point at which the community is gonna make an impact. I, I don't know. And that pie didn't come out sounding very well.
So Dave's suggestion of having an action item at our next committee meeting might help move this process forward. So there's no reason we can't have an action item at the beginning of the meeting because we're meeting as a group, right?
Right.
Right, but what Dave is saying is, is that really, should we get in the habit of doing business topics at the committee meeting?
Well, if we have to, we have to.
Yeah.
And I would, I would say, we've been talking about this for so long.
You're right. And there's, there's been, have there, have there been articles in the Williston paper and the Heinsburg paper and the Charlotte paper about this? Cause there's, I don't read those papers, but, you know, there were two articles in-
Shelburne.
The Shelburne paper.
Yep.
Well, we all know as board members, a lot of people don't pay attention until there's a decision that's right in front of people. So.
Right, and, and maybe-
Because people are busy.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we'll get a lot of feedback on this, but, you know, um, what I'm hearing is an interest to, um, not wait another month to approve this, but if we can expedite things by just having an action item at our next committee meeting in two weeks, why not? Right?
Yeah.
Well, I think that's, that's the plan. And if we could get a copy of the contract ahead of time, that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay. We were doing so well on time too. Dang conversation, communication. Um.
Where you put a bunch of people in a room and they want to talk.
They want to talk. Onto action matters. Seven point one, affirm board goals for budget. So this is kind of a multi-page document. Jean, finance, who wants to run with this?
Um, I can start. You guys can jump in. So there really are three pieces to it. Um, the first one is the committee's attempt to sort of recraft the board goals. So if we take a step back, the, uh, the, the budget process that we've been, we, you established last year was to, um, was to set the administration a set of educational goals and a financial goal. Um, and to say, come back with your answer to those, those two goals. Um, and so this is the attempt to sort of spell those out. This, so the first page, um, is, I don't want to say they're not, they're non-financial goals. They're more of the educational goals for the system. Um, and the committee, the things in bold are sort of changes. The rest of them are pretty consistent with last year's goals. Um, the bottom part where you say the follow-up on the board's year-round budgeting initiatives. This was based off of our discussion in the spring. Um, the, as you remember, the process, as we go through the fall budgeting season, there may come up things that the board says, wow, I have some questions about that. I'd like a little more work on that. Um, understanding that it's, you know, December 18th. You know, we're not gonna get, not be able to clarify it this year, but I would like to have, you know, this board as an organization would like to spend a little more time on this so that by the next year's budget, we know, we have the answers to those questions. So in the spring, we came up with this list of, of things that the board wanted to revisit in the spring for some work to be done before the next budget season. Um, and one was the common understanding of equity, which was discussed at the board retreat. I did attach it and now I see it on the table too. Um, the equity in essential arts, uh, so this is gonna be, uh, might have some, Lynn and I had long telephone conversations about the word addressed here. Um, so we had a discussion about the essential arts. Um, my understa, my summary of that discussion, the board's discussion, was that they understand that things are very different between the schools and wanted, um, to revisit whether that was something that needed to be addressed by the board. So this may just take the, the, uh, the form of a discussion this year. I don't think anybody should expect that-
We can't fix it.
Right. I don't think it's, I don't think, you should not expect, have the expectation that Lynn's gonna say, these are the 15 things that need to change in order to make essential arts equitable.
Everybody's getting HOMAC.
Oh, and the board shouldn't make those decisions either. It's-
Right. But one of the things that I am doing, and I've already started accumulating documents and resources that kind of point to what is an expectation for each of these areas. And you can imagine that like when you do a little bit of research on what's, what are the recommendations for art, they're put together by the people who are passionate about art. And so then you, you know, I've got a whole book on art. Um, when you do a little research on what we should provide in music, you, the, the people who are putting the recommendations together are passionate about music. And there's tons of research that shows both of those things are great. I'm going to start with, when I make this presentation, something that I want to plant this seed for right now. In our student day, there are 350 minutes. Right? Is that what we figured today? We're just doing some of this work today. I think it's 350 minutes. You know, that number might be flexed one way or another. And we want to have 90 minutes for literacy and we want to have at least 60 minutes for math. And then we have social studies and we have science. And they have to eat and they have to go out for recess. If you add all that up, it doesn't leave a lot of time for, uh, art, music, PE, world language, HOMAC, whatever it is. And whether you, you know, like there are a lot of ways that we can shape it. But one of the things the board is going to have in its head when it's making decisions about what do we want, is this piece around, are there some things that are really sacrosanct? And I would say literacy, math, science, social studies, right? And so then how, what we do with the rest of that time is what the board needs to, you know, come to grips with. And, and what, what you decide about that is really going to help point us in a direction of, okay, then what do we do? Cause if you say out of those 350 minutes, we're totally fine with giving 80 of them to essential arts, then that essentially means that you will have a literacy block that will be less than what we believe is best practice. And right now, every, you know, like we've done the initial look at what the, you know, the master schedules look like across the district. And it's really very, there's a lot of autonomy. And so that means there are a lot of changes and there are some places where like a literacy block is less than what we would say is the right amount of time. So I, I just put that out there as a teaser. You should be thinking about that. Because I love art and music myself, but there are other things that we need to get in there and we can't do it all. We do not have, and, you know, it's not like we can slide in extra minutes in the day.
Just, I'm trying to catch up. Just as a reminder, the discussion in the spring, what, what we took away as a to-do as administrative team was, um, to try to take at least a first pass at are there different outcomes for students?
Mm-hmm.
And so that's, Jeff's been trying to pull some data together that addresses that. Um, and again, if it's, if it's arguable that all the schools are doing a great inequitable job, that would make our, our life pretty easy. If, if it comes out something else, I suspect it would take a little longer to do an analysis that,
Right.
that you could get to the, the why rather than just the what.
Right. And the other moving parts are that we are doing a very focused look at our literacy, right? So we're getting information from DMG because we're working with them and they've worked with each of the principals. And we're getting information from the literacy audit that we're having done. And those two things are gonna bump up against each other. So there's gonna be a lot of having to make some decisions about what do we value and to what extent and how do we make sure that, you know, what's the best for our kids.
So what's the per, what's the, um, expectation for an outcome from our discussion in December about unified arts?
I, I think that you're gonna have to decide whether or not you think that students ought to have more than, like, and I think we're gonna have to chunk it. I think we're gonna have to chunk either K three, K four and five eight. And that's where, that's where our focus is. You're gonna have to make a decision about whether as a board, you support that students should have 40 minutes of essential arts in their calendar during the day and what's the ramification on the rest of the schedule, or whether you're fine with having more than that. And then what's the equity across?
I, I like, I like Jean's, I like, I like answering Jean's question first. I don't know whether 40 minutes makes sense because I don't know what the outcomes are. I kind of want to know what the outcomes are. Like what are our kids achieving now? And is, is there an inequity in it? That's where I, and then I think, then I think that's when, when you get to it.
And Lynn, that, that's what the finance committee was talking about too. I, I was thinking that more the question was, is it the way that the schools have it set up now, like in their autonomy? Is it working? Is it equitable? Or, or is our outcomes not, or are the outcomes skewed and that we have to look at making it more, um, less autonomous, like, more, like more the same? Like not necessarily that we would be prescribing 40 minutes, but that it's more like, is it working the way that it is now? Or does one, one town need more music because their, like the outcomes are X, Y, Z or whatnot? Like, I think that's what our discussion has been in the finance committee.
And we're not gonna have that data in December. So I'm just wondering if it's time well spent?
I think we have to start someplace. And I think that the two things are linked as much as, as we'd like to answer the simple question. I'm looking at Megan and Jack. We just had a hour-long conference call with DMG this morning where we looked at the data for the first time. And I can tell you, it's complicated and it bumps into each other. So we looked at a schedule that exists-
But that's literacy data, right?
It's literacy and essential arts because the two things play into each other. There's only 350 minutes in the day.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was just literacy that was, no, no, we're looking at all of the schedule.
So I think just to keep in mind, this is just a goal. It's just a goal. And the goal may be that we have a 10-minute conversation about where the administration feels they can get next year.
Right.
So I don't want to overpromise and I don't want the board to freak out that we're gonna try to force somebody on your decision down your throat in a short point. But we do have this process and I, and I want to keep reminding people because- because when things come up at this budget season, you have to be, have that, you know, that lens on. It's like, oh, this, this needs more follow-up. Put it on the year-round budgeting list.
It's like, I think the literacy piece will become part of the year-round budgeting. I am, before we go any further, now that we're halfway through this, since this is an action matter, can I have a motion?
No, this is just.
Oh, it is? I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's an action matter. A motion to
This, this page.
Affirm the board goals for the budget.
So moved.
Thank you.
It's a good list. Thank you.
So are we affirming this entire document or just the other assumptions?
So let me keep going, and then we can make sure that we're all on the same page with that. So, so the next page that's, that starts with operating assumptions with the numbers down it. So this is sort of the traditional assumptions document that the board used to vote on, because this is, this was part of the old process, which is where we would develop a baseline budget. So we would take all the programs we have this year, we'd apply all these, and we'd come up with, this is the baseline. If you just advance them all to the next year. Well, we don't really do a baseline budget anymore, right? We'd come back with a recommendation that's more fleshed out. So this document isn't, in my opinion, isn't relevant for the board to approve, but I know some people would just like to see what, what is being baked into the budget. So I don't, I mean, I'm okay with either one. You could include this in your, in your motion. I don't, I certainly don't want to come back to you because I decided that, you know, instead of fifty thousand for fuel oil for Charlotte, I need fifty-two, you know, and that's the kind of level that Bob used to have to kind of manage at this level. So my recommendation would be this is information only, and you're only voting on the front page, but that's.
Well, because we're giving you a target. That's, that's our job. You figure out how to make this all work within that target.
That's, that's kind of where I am on that.
Well, we don't have the knowledge to accept or not accept the numbers, because we don't do the, you know, we don't do the research on it. I do appreciate having this list, though I find it incredibly useful. So, thank you.
Just, while we're on this page, just for information, though, everything's in negotiation. So if you have any question about how that works with the, with the salary, we can talk about it in executive session at some point. The V-HI number is almost eleven percent up next year. That's going to be a big, is it frog to swallow? On the other hand, they're down number six there, all of the utilities and fuel, the documents that I go to to try to come up with some forecasting tool are all, all pretty flat. The diesel, if you just remember, is that Charlotte, we paid someone else to do our bussing, and this year it's internal. So, you know, I just, that's not more money, it's just, you know, diesel instead of paying Vets and Transit. And then number fourteen is sort of an add that we're putting in there, at least as a baseline, which is that we seem to be having some trouble, more trouble getting subs, because we're, our rates are not appropriate. So this is a number that the HR team's kind of come up with. So those are sort of the highlights of what we're baking into our response to your challenge.
Did you want to do the two point three and the rest of it?
Yeah, let me just keep, I'm on a roll.
Just, yeah, keep going.
Okay. So the next two pages are the finance model, the strategic model. We started last year, the board asked for sort of a five-year plan, just so that we'd have a target to, administration have a target to run to. If you're, if you're looking at both pages, and you see one with all the numbers, last year's model is up at the top. And down below is sort of a restatement of that base case model, and there's only a couple of changes. We kept the same CPI target as last, I didn't change that, so the two point three percent. I did put in a two point eight million dollar bond. That is, along this conversation, I don't want anybody to take that that two point eight million is what that bond is going to be worth. There's some reasons, when you get into the other modeling, why that's a good number to use, but I did throw that in. And then, of course, because we had such a favorable fund balance, add to our fund balance at the end of FY18, you know, I bumped that, the fund balance is higher, and so this, this base cases, A model just basically mimics last year's model and gives it back, you know, down to, down to what the auditors want us to hold for, for the case. So this is, this is just sort of what that would look like if you didn't change any other assumptions except add, add the bond and kind of string out the giving back number, because it's to make it a little more smooth. The conversation at the finance committee was around some alternatives to this model. And after a long conversation about it, I think, well, I know, that the committee's recommendation is, we don't have to decide what to do with the, with the fund balance today. I mean, what administration needs is this two point three percent target. And then maybe as we develop the budget and see how it comes out, we'll have a little more information to decide, can we afford to do something else with the money or not.
So what you're asking us to approve now are the education, the board budget goals and the dollar and the percentage.
And the two point three percent.
And the two point three percent to meet those goals. Discussion? Any questions?
I'm going to ask the naive questions now.
Okay, go for it.
So thinking about your comment, Colleen, which I agree with, and for the indicators committee to start to identify, where's, where would you see, or where do we see the overlap between these board goals and what those indicators are that we might want to tie to the budget? Because these are essentially the indicators, really, that we want to, that, if we're saying these are the priorities and the goals, like, these are the things we want to see.
So I actually
Sliding the budget, yeah.
I see them up here, the key board initiatives. If you look at proficiency-based learning, personalized learning, MTSS, and social emotional learning, I mean, the four pieces of the CIP are all in our board goals. And so, and supporting the implementation of the mission and vision, I think, which would include the indicators. I think, I think they need to be spelled out more, because it's pretty generic here. But I got to say, like, I'm just thinking about our conversation about the SEL. And we talked about doing that audit, and probably, based on the, based on that audit, we're going to need, well, we're going to talk about it on the twenty-seventh, changes. So I think that that's, I, I think it's pretty generic here, but I think as those indicators get identified, we can become a lot more specific in our board goals. What did you call these? Motherhoods?
Did not.
No, you didn't. Very generic. They're not generic.
I did not call them motherhood.
But I, that's, that's my
But it maps the process between the indicators and the board goals.
Right. And that these aren't, you know, these are financial goals, you know, that, marry this a little more.
And success for all students, what does that mean?
Right. And, and a percent, whatever we spend directly links to all of these things. So these are financial decisions.
And this is why we need indicators, because if, you know, PBL is not working, we need to know that. But how do we know it's working other than good stories? You know, what are the indicators that tell us that it's actually working? And, you know, a lot of people want to have quantitative indicators.
That it's working, or what do we need to make it work, so that's informing the budget decisions, not
Right. So it might mean that we need more professional development to support PBL instruction. You know, that might be an outcome of indicators that are not what we want them to be, for example. So that's where the indicators can be really useful. Of course, you know, you have, there are many layers to each statement, but, you know.
Any other thoughts about the board budget goals, the numeric number? Do you have? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I just ask, on this document, was this something that we did at the retreat?
These, I could be wrong, but with the exception of the bolded pieces, these were our budget goals for last year.
Can we indicate on this document the source of this set of goals? That the board developed in a date or something like that, that they just don't appear out of?
They came from the June twenty seventeen retreat.
If this is a public document, it'd be nice to have it on here that says, board goals developed June sixteenth, twenty eighteen, during budget retreat, and affirmed whatever.
Well, and
Well, they were developed by the committee. I mean
The finance committee.
The finance committee developed. I mean, the ones that
We went over these pretty extensively, you know, two weeks ago.
And this is their committee's recommendation for the boards.
But coming from From our discussion at the board retreat, right?
Well, most of these
Informed some of it, and then the finance committee took it. Just some historical reference to this, what's the source?
We'll figure out what, how to source it.
Yeah, thank you.
It's not going to be clear, but it's not going to be clear cut, but we can figure out what, what the, that will add aside.
So it's just not magical thinking, that there's a process.
Somebody's dream, yeah. Okay, seven point two. Do I have a motion to move the November meeting date from November twentieth to November twenty-seventh? Second. Any discussion? That's the beginning of our budget presentations, that meeting. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight point O, consent matters. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Nine point O, next meeting dates. We have the community forum here, October thirtieth at six PM. We have our committee meetings, November sixth at six PM, but that actually is going to start with a business matter if we do the SRO then. And then the CVSD regular meeting with the budget presentation of the, we'll just call it Megan's night. On the twenty-seventh. Okay. If there's nothing else, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, thank you.
Because we had such a big conversation.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned?
Karen, do you need anything else?